...consideration to participate in a Northeast Johnson County Superpass for 2020. As you may recall, Superpass began in 2009 between six cities: Mission, Fairway, Roland Park, Prairie Village, Leewood, and Miriam. At a time that these municipalities were operating outdoor seasonal pools. This was seen as a revenue-generating opportunity to increase foot traffic to the various pools. The city retained half the revenue from the sale of the pass with the other half put into a shared pot for visits. As we were about to embark on a new recreational experience that is unique from our neighbors, staff began to evaluate how we could make Superpass work in the new community center. The facility is designed with one fee for access to the entire center. That would include the walking track, gymnasium, fitness center, indoor and outdoor aquatics. The Superpass was designed for outdoor aquatics in 2009. How would we enforce that in the new facility? Second, timing of grand opening. Currently, we're on target for a third quarter, a date to be determined. The building most likely will open at peak season. Anticipated attendance the first year is expected to be higher, and the experience that we bring to our Miriam residents is staff's primary concern, as we want them to continue to support the facility in the future. Lastly, participation in Superpass by Miriam residents in 2017 was 23 households; in 2018, 24. Those same years, we sold 374 and 368 resident passes respectively, participation at 6.1 and 6.5% of our pool passes. This decision was before Park Board, and it was quite the discussion. We discussed how we would put people in, how we would track them, how would staff manage this. Ultimately, the decision was made and recommended by Park Board to take the year 2020 off and evaluate the facility and how we could move forward with Superpass potentially in 2021. So before you tonight is how do you want us to proceed?
And I understand we're going to have some questions, so who would like to come first?
Well, I just had some discussions or just want to share some viewpoints and some people that have spoken to me. One is that there are, as I've been out talking to individuals in the community, that some people obviously are still upset about the outdoor aquatics portion of it and that we don't have a high dive. I think the fact that we take away that Superpass then would prohibit those individuals from being able to go over and use somebody else's high dive, since we're not offering that. I assume that some of the other swimming pools have high dives. That would be one thing that's been brought up to me. Another is the fact that, you know, we're trying to get people in to utilize or to see our facility. It seems like we would want to try to attract people in to see what we have to offer. Hopefully, they might become future residents, or not residents necessarily, that people outside the city might want to come over and use ours as a non-resident use if they got a chance to at least experience our pool. And the third thing is, is that it seems kind of unfair for us as a city to have actually used the Superpass last year at other pools, but we didn't even offer a pool. We've asked them to, you know, to let us, our citizens, go over and use their pool, but now we're taking that away from them to come over and use our pool. That's just the three things that come to mind for me, that I want to be good neighbors to our city, especially when they helped us out in a time of need, and our residents in a time of need. I don't want to, you know, come off like, well, we don't need you anymore, so that's a concern.
So can I read?
Yes.
Okay. Just want to make sure that I'm not... So first, your concern about the high dive.
People have expressed that.
And I understand that. It is my understanding, and the only pool I'm not 100% familiar with is Prairie Village. Okay, so that would be the only pool that I know of that has a high dive.
But they could use that with the Superpass.
They could, yes.
They could use it without the Superpass.
Yeah, they could just buy a pass for the day and use it as well.
Yes, they could. So my...
Or they could just quit using our pool and just go over there and use that one all the time.
Or they could. They could. So, but the other concern you mentioned was, is that, you know, last year, the other cities helped us out. So just for comparison, the five cities besides us, when they pooled their resources, the average pay per visit was a dollar per visit to the facility from an outdoor perspective. We were a separate agreement last year because we were trying to reimburse our visits. We paid $3.74 to those cities for our citizens to go to their pools. So if we enter into the Superpass agreement and we say that a day pass, which we have not set, but we set our day pass fee at $7, $8, $9, whatever that range is, whatsoever market, and someone from, let's say, Mission buys a Superpass, they buy a Superpass for $95 as an individual, they come to our facility, we will be reimbursed anywhere through the history of Superpass, anywhere from 98 cents to $1.25 a visit. So there is a concern that, yes, we would have more foot traffic, but what's the experience towards our residents going to be? History shows that people, when they open up a new facility, getting people in the door is not a problem. It's the experience that they have once they're in the door that we need to maintain. So, yes, and we had that discussion at Park Board, what does it look like? How do you look at the reimbursement step, the reimbursement side of it? And what's going to be fair to our residents? We haven't set our fees yet. First, we've talked about it at Park Board. I know what the recommending fees look like, but we haven't necessarily had that discussion at this level yet. But that is a concern, is, is will I, as a Superpass person from a different city, be able to access the facility cheaper than a resident that's buying a membership to our facility for the summer? So, I mean, so reimbursement and fair, I get it. I mean, we had that conversation. When we talked about this with our Superpass cities, they all understand we're a different recreational experience now. We're not just an outdoor pool. And what we're offering is much more than what the Superpass ever intended to be offered to the residents.
I guess I'm still confused a little bit about where we have to offer the whole facility versus just the aquatic portion of it. Can we use like a bracelet or a stamp or something to say that, oh, you don't get to come in and use our track or our weights or our gymnasium, that when you have a Superpass, you only get the outdoor, or you only get the aquatic portion? I don't care if they're going to wear an outdoor, but...
So the question there is, is that when we set up our day pass fee, or when we set up the building, the building is designed that you check in and you have access to the whole building. So in order for me to monitor, to make sure that banded person only goes to the pool, I then have to have a staff at all of those amenities, making sure that you, banded person, can't get on the walking track, and you, banded person, don't go in the fitness center, and you don't go down to the gymnasium, and then you have, you know, the foot traffic in the building, and then our residents show up and there isn't a lounge chair for them. When Mission and Fairway opened, let me pull that, I have that information here. When Fairway opened, in 2014, they had 3,263 people attend their pool. In 2015, they went to 8,000, and they have maintained 10,000 until this year, and now they're down to 9,200. Those are all Superpass visits to their pool. So that increase alone of that foot traffic has caused issues with their residents in regards to making sure when they're there, they have the amenities available to them, whether it be a chair, space in the pool, you know, access to lockers, all that. I mean, it's great to have that foot traffic if you're prepared and are ready to handle that. We are now in a facility that we've never operated, and we're trying to figure that out at peak season. So it is a concern from staff is how do you, how do you monitor the foot traffic we're going to see anyway, and then potentially throw in an additional 10,000 people from other cities visiting you throughout the summer as well, in which we might be reimbursed $1.25 for at the end of the season?
How many people did we have use our Superpass the last year that we had Superpass and we actually had a pool?
I have that.
Could you do it?
A second. I've got all sorts of little notes here, I just have to find it. In 2017, we had 1,900 people visit our pool, and in 2018, we had 1,700 people, 1,748.
To be clear, those are visits. Those are not individual people.
Those are visits, yes, those are all visits. So it could be the same person coming 1,700 times, but those are visits throughout the year. The same way with Fairway, we do everything in visits because we don't track who the person is using it because we don't have them in our system.
We should anticipate 8,000, 10,000, maybe 1,900 is what we had in the past.
That's what we had in the past, but Mission and Fairway both, when they opened brand new, Mission doubled the first year in their number of visits, and Fairway almost tripled their number of visits, and they have since maintained that quantity of visits per year.
Kind of a question about the opening. I mean, we don't know exactly when it's going to open, so the third quarter could be, you know, anywhere. And I recognize you've addressed the problem of opening in mid-season, but it would seem to me that, what about our residents if we open up, say, July 4th, and they have no ability to buy a Superpass and go visit other pools in June? That seems like we're taking something away that might be not received very well, and so that is a concern, how, I mean, it would seem to me that, again, doing that might preclude some people from joining our community center because they're already going to opt to go to another pool for the summer because we're only partway there. But if we have the Superpass available, that takes that possible situation and, you know, and gives us a way to provide a summer swimming outdoor pool experience through Miriam.
Well, what we're hoping is, is that because of the anticipation of the new facility, that everyone would be excited to join us, and for the, you know, the timing that maybe we're not grand opened until mid-season, that maybe there would be the opportunity to offer some soft openings to our residents, to be able to introduce the facility to them in advance if we're to that point to do that. So although we might not be fully operational Memorial Day, that hopefully sometime through the month of June, we'd be able to do some soft openings just to see how it's going to operate, and maybe that would be a way to continue to increase excitement about the full grand opening possibly later in the summer.
Yes, the second question or concern I would have would be that, it's kind of along those same lines, but we're taking something away again in the aquatics. But, you know, listening to the concerns operationally of the control and the design of the community center, I mean, I remember when we talked about the design that we, there was some discussion about the fact that we consciously chose not to have another point of entry for the, for the outdoor pool because it would be easier to deal with, and, but this particular situation you're saying is so difficult to operationally deal with, some of the concerns that you raised, that you have to have staff in all these locations, seems to me maybe more, if, first of all, people, I think generally, if they know that they're supposed to only go to the pool, most people would go and do what they're supposed to do. So if there was a few that didn't, you know, that, I don't think necessarily you'd have to have a staff at every location just to make sure that they didn't use the facility, but that's just me. I think that like a stamp on the hand or something like that would be a way to be able to determine that there are people who are here on the Superpass, but...
So a stamp on the hand wouldn't work if they get in water?
Double ink.
But I will, I will tell you, ideally, I would like to agree with your comment that people go where they're supposed to go, but experience tells me otherwise, especially when you're dealing with the age group of about 12 to 19-year-olds. They don't necessarily always follow the rules. If mom is with them, maybe, but I don't necessarily agree that they would stay where they're supposed to stay just because they were told that.
It just seems that the number that would violate the policy versus the ability to, you know, kind of monitor, use wristbands for example, would be manageable, that's just my opinion.
And I would only add the comment that we don't know until we know, until we experience it. I don't know how we can build any additions. Ms. Hub, did you have a question?
My thought was particularly, the first year, we wanted it to be very successful, and so to be successful, we need to avoid any potential problems. And so I think that we need not participate with the Superpass, at least this year. If things go smoothly, it's better to add something than to feel like we have to take it away because it didn't work.
Are there other questions? Yes, Mr. Silver.
Well, as you know, I've been walking around the neighborhood, speaking to a lot of residents, and this has come up recently, and I'm learning that they do want to participate in Superpass, but I kind of want to tie into what Al said, which, I mean, sorry, Ava said. If we have the data that says that when you build a new facility, usage goes up a lot from people coming in from outside, why wasn't the facility designed with a second entrance where we could control who's coming in, going in, who's using the facility? It just seems like the data was there, but we didn't necessarily look at it.
Well, there's several things that went into the, to the thought process of design. First was operational expenses and infrastructure costs. So to build an outdoor entrance and access to the pool with one pass getting you into the entire facility, to have that just on the outdoor pool was significantly costly because we do not have an ADA access point necessarily from the outdoor pool into the facility. So now you have to look at the design of how you access the pool, and as you might recall, there are terrace steps to get down to the pool from the pool deck and the parking garage. So to build that ADA access, I'm not sure would have been economically feasible for a three-month operation. In addition, then, you're also talking about the staff required and the technology required to then be able to manage passes and manage operationally financial transactions that now have to occur, which now requires a building and electricity and data and all sorts of other things. So we did discuss a second entrance, but as we learned from our neighbors in Mission, a second entrance on a community center is a very, very costly piece of operations that we felt with one access into the building gave us better control, needless to say, outside. So we weren't building the building with the discussion of how do you operate the outdoor pool. We were building the building from the perspective of, we have to operate this building 365 days a year, not really 365, but pretty much, and the outdoor pool operates less than 100 days a year. So the cost, return on investment of doing that just wasn't there to just look at, look at it from an outdoor pool perspective.
And then additionally, once I get into the outdoor pool, it's pretty easy to open the door and get into the inside pool, and then I could go all over the whole facility again. So we don't have it, it's not separate, they are, it's a vigorous building.
And, and just again, to make the comment about the increased visits, we will have increased visits with or without the Superpass. Our friends at Lenexa, our friends at Oletha, all, the very first year they opened, it was not a matter of getting people in the door. People are very, very excited to come and see the center, whether it opens in July or June or August, I think everybody is very excited, and anyone that wants to participate in the Superpass has the ability to do so in another city. I mean, you have to be, a non-resident can purchase a Superpass a year after they're a member of a pool. So, you know, there are people that told us they only want to go to outdoor pools. Well, if that is what you, if that's what you do, we now have a different experience to offer, and we'll be glad to share that experience with you, but I'm not, not sure that Superpass is, makes sense for us the first year.
Okay. I would just like to point out that people with special needs are used to having sometimes separate entrances, so ADA access through the main part of the building and a separate entrance for people going in and out of the outdoor pool is not inconceivable.
Right, no, and I recognize that, but new buildings typically do not design with a separate entrance for ADA accessibility. It kind of is frowned upon when you're building new to do it that way.
Mr. Frisbee?
I remember the controversies that we had when we were building the outdoor pool in particular, and how many people are still upset about that, kind of reflecting what I've heard. I don't think I want to put those, that public, that certain quantity of public through the same thing where they can double up and put another notch in their gun and go after us again. And I, number two, I don't see anything wrong, I may be the only one here, that says, okay, buy the Superpass and you can have everything for two months. June, not, July, you said third quarter, so July and August. And then let them grow, let them find what kind of attributes we have, and they'll fall in love with it, they'll come back. So let's, let's just open it up and be kind to these people the first year.
But we won't do that for our own residents, though. That's not how, that's not how it'll be structured for our home residents. So the issue is that non-residents with a Superpass will actually have a better deal than residents will have in their own facility they've paid for, because of how it's structured.
Okay, I'm saying everybody, not just non-residents, everybody.
Right, but I think what Chris is saying is, is that if you look at the deal that a non-resident Superpass user will get, they will buy a, for instance, I live in Mission, I'll buy a $70 summer pool pass, for $25 I can add the Superpass, so I've paid $95, and now I can access an entire facility that allows me to walk on a track, play basketball, go to the fitness center, go to the indoor pool, and go to the outdoor pool for $95. Our own residents will pay more than $95 for that same experience.
What keeps our own residents from doing the exact same thing as our non-residents? If they just buy a summer pass to the pool, that they could do the same thing that the non-residents are doing, use the whole facility?
A summer pass will give you, if you purchase a summer pass through us, you get to access the entire facility, that's how it's designed. But our summer pass will not be $70 for an individual. Is the thought behind that, is anyone that buys a pass with us, the minute that they scan their card or the minute they buy a day pass, we are not telling them where they can or cannot go. They can utilize the whole facility. But our residents will not get, if they buy a Superpass and they go to Leewood, they can only use the outdoor pool. If they go to Prairie Village, they can only use the outdoor pool. If they go to Mission, they do not get access to Sylvester Powell. They only get the outdoor pool. When non-residents come to us, they now have access to a whole facility, and their fee to participate in that activity will be less than our own residents.
Unless we give them a ban and say, stay out of the other part, and if they violate it, then we have to throw them out or do something else.
Right, and so at noon, when we've got a line out the door of people that want to come and go swimming, we will be checking them in and banning them instead of just letting them swipe and go. I mean, so now, what's going to, what's that experience going to be like? I, my mom, with three children, and I want to come to the pool as a Miriam resident, and I'm now standing in line waiting to get in and going through the process of, oh, you're a Superpass here, I got to put a ban on your entire family. Okay, you're, whereas now, I mean, we've already talked about what that would look like from a staff perspective and how we would manage that, but you still got to work to, I don't know if that's the experience we want our residents to have the very first year we're opening the facility.
And I think just from a perspective standpoint, I don't think staff is necessarily recommending, I could be wrong, that we do away with Superpass forever. It's just simply there's question marks of how do you administer it in year one? How do we, what do the lines look like? Do we have the capacity that if we, if we could come up with a stamp that, okay, well, you know, what makes sense? I don't, I don't think the plan would necessarily be to completely do away with Superpass. We need to evaluate, how do we run the facility before we add Superpass into the mix?
And that was Park Board's recommendation, that with a 4-2 vote, we bring it back and we evaluate it for 2021, and we've brought that to the, our partnering cities, and they completely agree. There's no question of, well, because that was also a question, if you step out, will they allow you to step back in? And they're completely in agreement with understanding the situation, the unique opportunity we have in the situation that we're in this year.
Two sort of follow-ups. First of all, since we haven't set the fees or had that discussion yet, are we getting the cart before the horse by sort of using the economic question of what we're charging before we, while we make this decision, which I think does have some resonance with people in the community? I don't want us to get another black eye over selling out the aquatics patrons, the outdoor aquatics patrons. But the, again, the second sort of part of this is that if, it sounds like to me that we're worried about fairness and money and vis a vis residents versus non-residents, and somehow they're getting a better deal, again, I think that you guys, the staff, certainly could figure out a way to make this Superpass situation work. If, you know, that there's wristbands, it just seems to me like there's also a possibility that we're going to have residents that like the rest of the facility, but don't like the amenities in our outdoor experience, and taking away their ability to become members here and then also go to an outdoor pool that they feel like in the summer is where they want to, want to go is limiting. Again, we're taking something back off the table that residents would not be expecting, and I just don't think that's a good idea.
So in the years that they could participate, 23 and 24 households out of 368 and 374 passes sold participated. We didn't even have 10%...
But we had a different pool.
We had a deluxe pool.
We had a entirely different outdoor pool, so that's, that's my concern.
But we're off, I mean, yes, we had a different pool, but we don't even know what this, they haven't had this experience yet.
So let's let them have the Superpass and we'll see.
Oh, okay. You made your point, did you have something else you want to add?
Well, I was just going to, going to say, I, the issue as I understand it is not that there's a, I think clearly we could find some way to track people in the midst of the grand opening and all the rest of it. I think part of what we're struggling with is that it's not an apples-to-apples comparison, and the Superpass was an apples-to-apples comparison when everyone just had one type of facility. When it's no longer, when, when you're bringing a different amenity to the agreement, it doesn't translate the same way. So again, there, so essentially what, what I'm hearing is that on the first year we had this facility open, there are individuals in the community that are requesting that we subsidize other individuals in the community to leave our community to use an amenity we already have. That's, that's what I, I think I'm hearing, that all, all the residents should pay for people to leave our community, that if they so choose, or at least 24 households choose to do so. And it would seem to me like the year we opened the facility, we should want our residents who've paid for the facility to have first shot at our facility. who've paid for the facility to have first shot at our facility, to want to be excited about our facility and not pay for them to go to someone else's pool simply because they want to. I, I think I heard the word, we prohibited people, we're not prohibiting anybody from doing anything. People can still go to other pools and pay a daily fee, people can go become a non-resident, just like our residents could go there, people could come here and be a non-resident at ours. I, I think we're not restricting the flow of visits from place to place. I think it's simply just, until we can figure out how to create a pay structure with the other cities that will equalize what people get by coming to us versus what we get to go, from going to them, because our residents go and just get a pool, which we already have one of. Other residents would come and potentially get more than just a pool if we can't track it. And, and we could clearly look into that and see if there aren't ways that we could track it. But, but we would be essentially subsidizing people to go use other people's pools the day we open our, the year, the year we open our pool first.
I understand that. And you said a number of things there that I think are important, but they also have a counter, counter argument, because that depends on your perspective of, you know, whether or not it's apples-to-apples, apples-to-oranges or something. If, I think we should be able to track people. And if we can track people using the outdoor pool, our outdoor pool has less amenities than a number of the other outdoor pools if you want to do an outdoor summer pool experience. So there is that risk that people would go somewhere else. Given and not going through the whole redesign, you know, the design issues and the trouble that we had, I think we should just allow the residents to, the ones that choose to, to have that option, particularly because we may not open the pool until our way through the season. There's just too many reasons from my standpoint that we should be able to work this out and allow people to buy a pass and then use, buy a super pass. And when we open, we open, hopefully they'll come and, but they get a chance to go whenever the rest of the, the earlier part of the season that our pool's not open, they can go not pay the daily fee. So that's, that's my concern.
So did we have a question for Anna? We had last year a special super pass deal because we didn't have a pool to bring to the, the super pass agreement. If we were to not open on time, let's assume that it's a month or a couple of weeks, what is your hunch? How, how would we work through that? I mean, we're gonna be sending 100% of our people elsewhere if we're not open on time. I assume that they would, that the super pass cities would want to be, I'm assuming, would want to be compensated differently for that period of time, whether it's three weeks, a month, or two days, whatever it is, versus when we're open and everybody has a pool in the, in the pot. Would we have to run two agreements? Would we have to have agreements similar to last year and then kind of as soon as we go, hey, guys, we're open, let's all, now this agreement governs it or how?
That, that would be my guess, only because when we did this last year, the concern was, when we discussed as cities, we had the conversation of, well, we'll just all go with the agreement and we'll throw all the visits in together and we'll see where it mixes out. And when we started looking at that and running the potential numbers, we diluted the pot so greatly that they looked at it and they're like, no, we, we need you out, we need you separate because you have so many more people, there's the potential of so many more people coming to us. So that's why this past year, we paid $3.74 a visit, but the super pass cities were reimbursed, I believe it was a $1.22 a visit, a $1.23 a visit, if they were in that, in that pot. So we are.
Because we were sending more people elsewhere.
We were, we sent 3,976 people to other pools last year.
Visits?
Visits. We sold 148 passes total compared to what we had sold for an entire season, we only sold 148, and we offered them a free super pass. All they had to do was come and renew their membership.
But would, I guess, would the cities, would the other super pass cities have, and you may not know the answers, would they have a concern with us not having a pool in play for some period of time where they are getting our 100%? Because I assume we're gonna be pushing out memberships, I mean, our plan is to open on time. So my hope is, is we have more memberships than we historically have because we have something to get excited about. So if all those, if we go, oh, hey, we're not open, all those, and we're part of super pass, all those people go to the other cities, I assume they will want us to work some sort of, depending on how long the duration is, some sort of different deal.
Mission, Prairie Village, and Fairway are concerned. They were concerned last year. The majority of our visits go to those three pools.
Their closest.
They're the closest pools. And so if we were to enter into the agreement and not have a pool, we would have to, they would request that we have two agreements because they're not gonna want to be reimbursed 98 cents.
98 cents for?
For all of those visits until we have a pool.
But, but in theory, if we had two agreements and they were agreeable to them, we could work through the money issue.
We could work through the money issue.
So if they were agreeable?
Yes. We would have to then, it would be two tracking systems.
Sure, it wouldn't be easy, but yeah, we could, in theory.
One more.
Mr. Frisbee?
Seems to me that we ought to work on the banning first.
You need to turn on your microphone.
All right, sorry. We put, let's say, blue for water for just the outdoor pool, brown for the color of the building for indoor and everything. And work on that first to see if it works. If you don't think it's gonna work, come up with a second plan, in case it doesn't work, you revert to the Plan B. Number, then, cleared? Clear?
So you want everyone that walks in the building to work out, use a walking track, to have a ban, including everyone that just is coming from a super pass perspective?
If they're gonna use the outdoor pool, have it blue. If they're gonna be using everything, have it brown. Seems to me, that's one option. Think of a different one, you know, go for the.
No, I think he's saying every person that walks in the building would be banned.
Right. Every person that walks in the building.
And every time they come to the building, every day? I, I just, I see that as nothing but a headache.
I'd also like to suggest volunteers instead of staff. You've got some people in the community that have volunteered that are retired, you know, I would, I would help doing that.
So from 5:00 AM in the morning till 9:00 PM at night, those are potentially the.
When's the pool open?
Well, the building opens at 5:00 AM.
When's the pool open?
Well, noon. The outdoor pool would open at noon.
Okay.
But I'm just saying, from an operational standpoint now, I'm just trying to figure out, well, if I come at this time, I get a ban, if I come at this time, I don't get a ban. I'm just looking from a consistency standpoint, if I'm a member of the community center, how come sometimes I have to wear a brown band and other times I don't have to wear a band?
No, they would, if there's, if it's resident, they're paying for the whole thing, they always wear the brown, the blue band, excuse me, the brown band that says you can do anything. Pool and indoor.
Right. But if the building opens at 5:00 AM and I walk in at 5:00 AM and I don't.
With the brown.
So I'd, I'd have to have a brown band.
Right. And, and, and volunteers, I'm suggesting, seriously, you go after volunteers and see if we can get them to help.
First of all, that, in my mind, is a logistics nightmare. It's a supervision nightmare. Okay, you're, you're gonna have, first of all, you've got water where kids can drown, you're gonna have a volunteer in charge? I don't think so. Okay, so volunteers.
They do.
And again, it's still, it's still a logistics nightmare, okay? Trying to manage that. My, my thought here is, guys, we're talking about, what, June, we're opening, right? Two months without a super pass. Come on. Two months without a super pass. Give the staff and the people working there an opportunity to figure out how this thing's gonna work. We have no clue. The building is not even built yet. And you're, and again, I'm hearing guesses from everybody here of how to do this, because you don't know either.
We know the design, so we can figure it out.
But you haven't been in that building where people run, move in it and activities. Here comes a class that's got 30 kids in it, 30 little dancers in it, okay? And, and you got, I mean, again, we don't know, but what's, what's two months, right? And given this an opportunity to develop. I mean, I, I guess, I guess I'm the only one up here who feels that way, but, but again, it, to me is, is give the staff that's working in that building a chance to figure it out, all right? Now, it may be a bad thing, it may come down to that, that, yeah, we've gotta control this because they're, they're using the weight room, they're supposed to be in a pool, and our residents are trying to use the weight room, and now they're pissed, all right? Well, now, now, explain that to your resident when they're pissed, okay? I couldn't use the weight room because we gave them super passes and they're using the weight room. Okay? So, so again, you're looking at, you're looking at some people that are gonna be upset both ways, whether you do it or whether you don't. Common sense says, give it a chance to develop. Give it two months, pool's closed outside, all right? They got a staff, we got, we got intelligent people, let them bring it back to us again and let's talk about it. Have some data that we can look at rather than assumptions and thoughts. We can make a more intelligent decision now, couldn't we? So, so again, I apologize for raising my voice, all right? But, but again, two months.
I think that goes back to the statement I made quite a while ago that said, we need to have experience before we can establish what's the most efficient way to do this. Yes, Mr. Neal?
I'd like to say something kind of a little bit in response to that, but the, I agree that we, we don't know. And I, I think that this is obviously a divisive issue and is brought up before. We've actually talked about fees, which I question that as being, you know, a good, a good idea. But the second thing is, I've heard from three of the Park Board's members about this as well. So that's, now, I know it's four to two, but if one person wasn't there who's also reached out about it and has, so it's clearly was not a clear-cut case on the Parks Board either, in my view, based on what I, you know, four to three. So obviously, we're trying to solve a problem here. We're trying to, you know, we're trying to, and we're looking at different pieces of the problem to try to figure out what the best way to go forward for the community is. One of the, you know, and, and I lean towards the, let's not take away something else with respect to aquatics.
But David, how do you solve a problem if you don't know what it is?
Well, I, I.
But you don't know the problem, you just said we're trying to solve a problem. We don't, we don't, we don't know what the problem is, right?
Al's suggestion. I mean, again. Al's suggestion with two bans, I, I think is not a good, particularly good suggestion. But I do think one wristband for super pass people, it would be easy to spot, you don't have, you don't have to even determine which color it is. Oh, they got a wristband on, so they don't belong in the weight room. And you just ask them politely to, you know, to leave. I really don't see that that's that complicated.
And you're assuming that they would leave the wristband on.
Exactly. That's why we need two bans.
Okay. I'm not quite sure, but I think that at this point, I've given all of the people in the council a chance to speak that might want to, and now I will receive comments from the public and so, I'm gonna slow and dance them. Yes, Mr. Crick?
Back again, I think this is my record. So I wanna start by saying, you guys don't have to say just yes or no to what's before you tonight, to accept or to not accept. You can, well, for the different thing you want to accept or change words or ideas. It's not just black and white, you're here to think, not just rubber stamp. But number two, I do want to fully respect the work of the P R A B. They met in quorum and their, their recommendation, it's official whether it's four to two or, or four to one, or, or, I mean, whatever the odds are, that, that stands. And I don't think we should negate that. However, being there, we know that city council will make the decision, that you got, these are on your shoulders to make decisions like this, and we expected deliberation. So, third, I've been thinking a while about this, this came up in the Parks Board's two, over two months ago, and I've been listening to everything said here today. I think if we don't participate in it next year, there's a risk of further alienating residents and having bad will between cities. It could possibly show up in newspapers and make the city look bad. I think when, when you say they don't have to buy super pass to visit other pools or to swim in the summer, that's absolutely true. But that can further, even that statement can kind of further alienate those residents because, I mean, of course, they don't have to buy super pass, they could buy the day pass, they could buy a membership at other, at other facilities, they could also build their own pool, right? I mean, nothing stops an American from building their own high dive and pool and waterslide and all this stuff. But their tax money's going to build one, well, not the high dive, but they're building a lot of things here in Merriam. And, and the super pass program for many years has allowed them to have the selection in the Northeast Johnson County area to swim where they like. They have variety at a reasonable cost. In your notes for this meeting, it said there was almost 4,000, 3976 visits by Merriam And so it's, it's clear seeing that, that not having a pool locally, not having our old pool has inspired dramatic use of super pass by our residents to other cities. I mean, that's for granted that we don't have a pool at all. But the people who've used it this summer are likely to have problems, well, I think many of them are likely to have problems with the changes that were made to the outdoor facilities. This room is filled in several city council meetings with that sentiment. And so keeping them, retaining their access to easily visit other Northeast Johnson County pools would, would help reduce that alienation. Policy violations regarding super pass people wandering around in the, the rest of the building would be limited to the summer swim season, which is like two months and change. We've, we've heard that our opening is gonna be quarter three sometime, all right? If you were to average out quarter three, that falls August 15th. Pool season's over by then, so it's kind of a moot point. I would, I would suggest that we repeat our, our 2019 participation in 2020, or ask the super pass committee if we may do so. In 2019, our residents were able to swim at other places, they weren't able to come here. And doing the same thing in 2020 is not that much of a slight to other communities because our pool's not even gonna be open until the very end of the summer season anyway.
Excuse me, I'm, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but people keep throwing that around and I've not ever heard that as an official, anything.
Well, Q3 sometime, there's not a concrete date, we don't know.
Excuse me. Again.
Our project is currently on time, we're meeting milestones, so we continue to expect to have the building delivered in May. We just need to work through what the opening scheme will look like.
Well, that's where residents.
That's, that's one more clarification, thank you.
Thank you. I kept hearing Q3 sometime during this meeting.
I know.
So.
We just haven't set a date.
Okay, okay, well, that, that's a bit of relief, thank you. Lastly, I heard the term subsidize used a few times, and the super pass program, correct me if I'm wrong, but it is funded by the people who buy the super pass memberships. And so I don't think it's a subsidy necessarily. That money comes out of the pot, so to speak, of that, of the money that's brought in by the, people who buy the super pass. So that are, those are my thoughts on this issue. Hopefully, there's some other people here that want to speak tonight, and thank you for making an informed decision.
Is there anyone else from the public who would like to speak? Yes, Brian? Yes, sir. Name and address, of course.
Thank you, Brian, Shopway 8904, West 49th Terrace. I'm gonna kind of repeat some of the same things that were just said. I'm gonna leave most of the discussion that was happening tonight between y'all, I have my feelings on some of those, but that's for Facebook, right? But just the, the one topic, I am one of the 24, well, not one of the 24, that was probably 18, right? The 24 out of 3, 20 and 5.
Seven.
So, so with, with 19, it was 100% of the Merriam residents that bought a pool pass, bought the super pass. And I'm one of those, I did not buy the super pass prior to 19, and I fully plan to be at the new facility every day with my kids during the summer if I can, and just be a Merriam pass owner. My concern is that first part of the summer. I did, I don't remember either who all, where it all came out, but the Q3 came out several times. If I have a concern with that time period, if when pools open, my family can only go to a pool paying full price as a non-resident, that concerns me. My family doesn't have a lot of extra money, but are huge pool fans. As long as if we are not going to be open by the standard, what is it, Memorial Day? By this, by Memorial Day. By Memorial Day, I would just suggest we do have a plan to allow a discounted rate of some sort to the super pass family of pools. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to make a comment? Slogan, Mr. Engel, do you have any further clarifications for us? Council, questions?
Yeah, I have a question. Can we talk about tabling this?
Talk about it.
I'd like to, since there's so, there's a disparity between our philosophies here, so I'd like to maybe take some time and think about this.
So are you, have you decided how long you want to table this, or are you?
Next month.
After a work session, perhaps, where we're talking about fees?
Sure.
We can do that, is there additional information that staff can bring to enlighten the conversation?
I would like to see a authorization by the staff to say, this is the best way in Plan A to do this, whether it's blue or brown wristbands, or Plan B, and let's talk about some plans that the staff can come up with. Anna's pretty creative, I'd like to hear her input.
She, I think she has presented a lot of input, now she's talked about it with the board. I also wonder if it would address the concern that we're talking about super passes before we were talking about fees, if we somehow delay in some regard. Okay, but since I'm sitting in this chair, I can't come up with a motion, so.
Just to be clear, a vote to table brings it up at the very next meeting, so that's in two weeks versus if you're wanting staff to put together some research and bring it back at that point in time, then that would be more in line with just a motion to continue the matter to a date certain or an event certain.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Sellers?
If we're talking about tabling this and finding additional information, it sounds like other cities have made concessions for us to use their facilities by adjusting the price. If our facility has way more amenities than other cities, is it possible, I think you might have already kind of mentioned this, Chris, to see if there is a concession, a second agreement, for super pass users coming in using the new Merriam facility that has a gym and a locking track and an indoor pool?
My only caution to that is that would be detrimental for Mission, because they have a similar facility without the outdoor pool. So if we were to make a concession that their super pass users could utilize our facility, but they have to pay a little bit more, then they could see a spike in their outdoor pool memberships to then come to our facility to utilize our, to utilize our facility versus their facility. So we need to be mindful of the business that they're also operating that's equal to ours, that's just.
But their business is different, because they have a separate entrance for those facilities.
They actually have two facilities. They are operating, they're not operating one facility, they're operating two. But if we, if we were to figure out a way to be reimbursed differently, my concern then is that we would impact their memberships, because they probably have people that do summer memberships or month-to-month memberships, and they might look at, well, what's the better deal for me and my pocketbook? So I would just be cautious of what that would look like from a reimbursement standpoint. And I would add that I would like to have some kind of a thought process of if we actually do open late, what we, what we might be able to provide for our members and residents, so that they can use other pools without paying full non-resident fees.
If you have a vote, we don't concur, then it goes, essentially could go back to the parks board, or, you know, in conjunction with a work session or something, a different proposal. I mean, I would assume that we could do that.
That actually feels, doesn't feel right.
Well, because we have, I mean, what I believe, what I believe we're debating is, do we do the super pass as it's been contemplated in the past? Because I believe that's what was presented to Park and Rec, I believe, was, will we do super passes that's traditionally been, the programs worked for the last 10, 10 years or so? And that is what they considered, I believe, was not the modifications. So if you were to not concur with Park Board, you would be saying we should continue with super pass as previously contemplated. I believe, I think that's what you're saying, if you're saying no.
I am really uncomfortable with just voting it down, because I don't think you can write back and propose in a different way.
But again, it seems, I agree with you, it seems to a certain extent, I agree with the part that we don't know, there's certain things we don't know yet, and that we haven't factored those in, i.e. the fee structure.
That's why I think continuing it and asking for more information would be better, cleaner in my mind. But someone has to come up with a motion?
Well, you can make any motion that you want, if you have the votes, we will do whatever you tell us to do. How's that?
Usually, I'm the one who's writing what the motion is going to be, so you know.
I have a question. I'm sorry, just concerning, when are we going to be talking about the fees? Because it seems like tying it to discussion of the fees and doing this might be a good time to do it.
We currently have the fees slated for work session next meeting, is that correct?
November 11.
We'll have a study session on fees. That's why I was trying to tie them together.
Right. So would that be the following meeting, that we'd want that after the discussion of the 11th? I mean, are we looking?
If, yes. If we discuss it during a work session on the 11th, you can't have actionable items, it would have to be the next regular council meeting, which would be?
Which date?
November 25.
Yeah, November 25.
How about November 6, we talk about it, and then vote out on the 11th?
Or would it have a special meeting?
No, no. That is your meeting for, that's a joint PC, city council meeting.
It's very full, that meeting is very, just full agenda.
So it's full.
Okay. I mean, I think, you want to make the motion, I think.
I would, I would make a motion that we continue this, this matter, whether or not we concur with the parks board, their recommendation on participating in the super pass 2020 until November?
25.
25. In the meantime, have a discussion and a work session.
I'll sort of.
Adam Clark?
Councilmember Neal?
Aye.
Councilmember Pape?
Aye.
Councilmember Sellers?
Aye.
Councilmember DeBolt?
Aye.
Councilmember Frisby?
Aye.
Councilmember Hands?
Aye.
Councilmember Happ?
No. I find it appalling that we've spent so much time talking about something for such a short, that's going to affect us for such a short period of time in this first season, and we've let, trying to serve a few residents override serving the majority of our residents, and trying to make this first season very successful, though I vote no.